Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 26 Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Copeland, would you mind leading us?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to the roll call of members. Madam Corrigan, we call a roll, please.
Yes.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Robertson is absent this evening. Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any edits or changes to the minutes? Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes? Does a motion to approve the minutes? In a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes are approved.
Dan, I was not here.
Dan, Dan, motion approved. So, we'll move on to old business, and I apologize, council, this was my best guess of what our agenda was last Tuesday, so there are some slight tweaks here. The first item up here is the Resolution 2018-42, which is the Hendricks Real Property Tax Abatement. That has been requested, we moved that to our next meeting. Again, we didn't get the SB1s until today, so we thought that would be too late to get on tonight's agenda, so we'll take that up at our December 10 meeting. So, the next item is Resolution 2018-48, which is the Annexation Fiscal Plan, and I'll have Ben Bontrager come up and introduce that to us.
That's not on here.
Correct. That was a... And that you received that earlier today, but Ben can talk about that.
Yeah, it was a late addition today. We had the fiscal plan done last week, but we're working on getting resolution numbers and all that good stuff, so we just got that taken care of today. Good evening, council members. This fiscal plan is relating to the annexations that were introduced at your last meeting. There is one fiscal plan for the four annexations, we went ahead and combined into one plan. So, just to refresh your memory, the four annexations, let me get my maps out here. Here is the first one. It's on Wit Road, just directly north of our existing city limits. The second one is on 300 North, it's about six acres. It's directly across the 300 North from the hospital-owned property, just a little bit west of 25 East. The third one is a little bit larger, and can't really see it with the glare going on, but I'll try. 300 North runs right through the middle of it, this is the hospital-owned property to the south, and then Jackson owns some property to the north, you see here. And then the final one is a series of six properties that the hospital has acquired over the last year or two on Lebanon Street, just north of their existing entrance. So, six residential properties there, they're now under hospital ownership. So, those are the four annexations. The ordinance will come up next after this resolution. This resolution does need to be adopted before you can adopt the annexation ordinance. In terms of the highlights from the fiscal plan, this is a fairly straightforward, from both a cost and revenue perspective, everything that's being annexed is, other than those six homes, is currently agricultural property, so we're not adding a significant amount of revenue to the city in terms of the annexation. There is not a proposal of development for any of the property as of yet. This is merely my understanding as a marketing effort on the broker's part, to take one step out of the process for any potential developments, may look at the properties, if they've been annexed, that's step one, and it's a fairly significant time-consuming process, so if they can take that part out of the development process, that helps them from a marketing perspective. From a cost perspective, again, because there's not many residents that are being annexed, there's not much use there, the really cost is just incremental increase in the road maintenance costs for any of the adjacent roads that will be annexed. So, as you can see, they're projecting right now, there's 14 people, based on estimates of number of people per household in those six houses, I don't know if they're actually all occupied still, but that's their projection on number of people, as part of the annexation. In terms of the cost side, let me find the summary page for you, if you wanted to... Page 13 of the fiscal plan identifies what some of the additional costs might be associated with the annexation, again, due to the fact that the population is really minimal, you see some just additional material supplies and repairs for the street department, for the additional road mileage that would be annexed, and then fuel or repairs associated with police, again, these are just incremental increases based on the population and/or amount of road miles that would be added. So, that gives you a rough breakdown. Right now, again, it's mostly agricultural property, so really, the assessed value of the annexed area is only about $600,000, basically value of, assessed value of the land, so. That's the highlights of the fiscal plan, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have any about that.
And again, want to clarify to you, this was a 100% voluntary annexation, so all of the property owners are asking the city to bring them in, so it's not like we're going out and getting them, it's the other way around.
Yes, yes.
Any questions concerning the fiscal plan?
Is it tied to the annexation of 300?
In terms of the road mileage added? Yeah, any adjacent roadways, there's some segments of 300, there's a small segment on Wit Road, a small segment, I guess it would Lebanon Street, that's not our roads, yeah, it's just, it's maybe a mile and a half a road that would be part of the annexation, so yeah, that's where the additional road miles comes in, is any adjacent roadways, any roadways adjacent to the annexation area would also come in as part of the annexation.
Well, how much of Wit Road, from where to where?
Just a few hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah, the annexation on Wit Road is on both sides, so any part of Wit Road that's... Yeah, that glare is rough. So, this small little segment of Wit Road I hear, which is just a few hundred feet, is the part of Wit Road that would be included in the annexation.
And we already have kind of a... And Wit Road and both 300 are already kind of roads that are kind of duly shared and duly covered by both the county and the city, especially when it comes to snow plowing and things like that, so we already cover those roads anyway, from a maintenance, we don't necessarily plan to maintain them, but we already cover them with snow plows, things like that already, so.
With the annexation of this property and the other one that was with the new housing development last year, are there any property owners in that line that want to come into the city as well, on Wit Road?
We haven't addressed it with any of them, certainly something I would be happy to do, you know, the question for those guys is, what would their desired level be to be annexed to the city if there's not much of a benefit to them? Usually, people don't volunteer to pay more taxes, but the sanitary sewer that gets extended further to the south through Sunbrook would make the possibility of public utilities, from a wastewater perspective, available to these property owners too, so that may be something that triggers some conversation.
Okay, I thought, you know, road improvement as well, infrastructure, I thought, might be part of that as well, if we own all that, we'll lay down too as well, so, okay. No, just curious. Thank you.
Any other comments concerning the fiscal plan?
So, the Wit Road, let's say, from Lafayette Avenue to 250, part of that is county, part of it is city?
So, everything up to Austin Drive is 100% city, and then we also have the portion north, where the other annexation we did for the Sunbrook neighborhood, where that touches Wit Road, that's our, part of our road is now as well, however, the remaining, it's kind of a start-stop, start-stop thing right now, so this actually takes it a little bit further north. Kevin, do you want to speak on this? You probably...
The only reason I bring it up is just trying to foresee issues when it comes time to do roadwork.
Yeah, and that's where I guess I'd just add to this, Ben's exactly right, state code is pretty clear, you annex a piece of property adjacent to a road, you're taking over maintenance responsibilities of that road. So, on Wit Road and 250 North, we get a lot of start-stops, there's a lot of holes in that road. We've had a good working relationship with the county for a long time, we both sort of cover that, and when it comes time to resurface the road, historically, we've looked at dividing costs, or whatever needs to happen. What I'd like to say, though, is that I've already been in discussions with the county engineer, we're going to meet this winter to look at things like Wit Road and 300 North, and John Bart Road, areas where we have a lot of holes, so to speak, on the road maintenance, and see if we can't begin to craft some sort of interlocal agreement, so that we divide those things up in a more common sense manner. It doesn't make sense for us to, you know, hopscotch down the road maintaining certain areas, and we wouldn't do that, especially like when it comes to snow plowing, but there's also no reason for us both to drive up and down the road, so let's just have a common sense interlocal agreement that draws those lines out, so that we can just operate in the future, and everything's in writing, there's an agreement as to who maintains what, and so we'll do some horse trading there, some areas where we don't really have a need to go out there, like, we have a gravel road technically in the city limits, it's one small segment of gravel road, so that'd be an opportunity where we could say, okay, county, you can maintain that gravel road, maybe we'll maintain all of 250 North, you know, and we'll figure out a way to divide those up, where it's even and equitable and makes sense for both entities. But that's on our agenda to do this winter, is to sit down with the county and start working through those things.
That's great, so we don't want, we don't need blurred lines like we had with the Elmwood Bridge.
Exactly.
You know, when it comes time to do something, so that's a good job.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning Resolution 2018-48? Any public comment concerning their resolution? Okay. At this time, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-48? Any motion at all?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I have moved to approve Resolution 2018-48.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-48, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, next, in relating to that, is ordinance 2018-18, which is considering the Wit Road annexation to the city of Lebanon. You want to present all of them again, Ben, or do we want to go into depth on all of these, or?
Yeah, I mean, I could just quickly remind them of which...
I think just maybe just show the one we're talking about, and then we'll, and then we'll have their ordinance read on second reading, and then we'll tick, bump, comment, and vote.
Yep. So, just a reminder, I did show you this already, so ordinance 2018-18 is related to this Wit Road property here. And I can't get rid of all the glare, but yeah, this is one of the four that was part of the fiscal plan, so 2018-18 involves these properties on Wit Road.
Okay. So, Rob, can you read the ordinance in second reading, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2018-18 states, 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation have filed a voluntary petition with this council. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 15, and forwarded docket number 18-41 to the council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the single-family residential zoning classification for the annexation area. This council conducted a public hearing on November 13. The council has adopted the fiscal plan for the annexation area, and therefore, the annexation area generally located on both the east and west side of Wit Road, approximately a half mile, south of 250 North, and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the southern boundaries of the annexed area. It's hereby declared annexed to and declared to be part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and rights ways of public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby assigned to Council District III and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. The annexation area has assigned the single-family residential zoning classification, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage by this council, its publication, and the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2018-18? Okay. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay, would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2018-18?
Make a motion, we pass ordinance 2018-18.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-18, is there a second?
Second. Morris, have it.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance passed unanimously, thank you, council. Next is ordinance 2018-19, which is the 300 North annexation to the city of Lebanon.
All right, just real quickly, 2018-19 relates this about six-acre property on 300 North, man, the glare's really bad on this one, man. That didn't help. It's about a six-acre property, it's just west of 25 East, on the north side of 300 North, so.
Okay. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2018-19 states, 100% of the owners of the parcels identified in the annexation area have filed a voluntary petition with this council, that the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 15, and forwarded docket number 18-42 to the council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the single-family residential zoning classification to the annexation area. This council has conducted a public hearing on November 13, 2018. The council has adopted the fiscal plan for the annexation area, therefore, the annexation area generally located at the north side of 300 North, approximately one-third mile east of State Road 39, and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the southern boundary of the annexation area is hereby declared annexed to and declared to be a part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and rights ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby assigned to Council District IV and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. The annexation area, again, is hereby assigned single-family residential zoning classification, and shall be in full force and effect upon the passage by this council, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2018-19? Any council discussion concerning ordinance 2018-19?
Sir.
Any motion from council?
Remove ordinance number 2018-19.
Be approved?
Be approved.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-19, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance passed unanimously as well, thank you, council. Next is ordinance 2018-20, which is also on 300 North annexation.
We'll try this without the light, see if it's any better here. Yeah, it's better. All right, here's the annexation area on 300 North, related to 2018-20, you've got the hospital property south of 300 North, and then the Jackson property on the north side of 300 North here.
Okay. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2018-20 states, 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation have filed a voluntary petition with the council, and that the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 15, and forwarded docket 18-43 to the council, with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the single-family residential, the single-family residential SF2 and planned business commercial zoning classification for the annexation area. This council has conducted a public hearing on November 13, 2018. This council has adopted the fiscal plan for the annexation area, and therefore, the annexation area generally located on the north and south side of 300 North, directly east of 25 East, and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the southern boundaries of the annexation area, is hereby declared annexed to and declared to be a part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and rights ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby assigned to Council District IV and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. The annexation area is hereby assigned to the single-family residential, single-family residential two, and planned business commercial zoning classifications, in accordance with Exhibit C. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage by this council, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period.
Thank you, Rob. Try it again. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2018-20, or dash 20, correct? Yeah, 2018-20, public comment? Okay. Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay, would entertain a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 2018-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2018-20. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance passed unanimously.
Dan, was that you?
Yes.
Yeah. And finally, ordinance 2018-21.
All right. Last but not least, 2018-21 is the six properties along Lebanon Street, just north of the hospital's entrance, that the hospital now owns and want to annex and incorporate into the overall development for the hospital.
Okay, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2018-21 states, 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation have filed a voluntary petition with the council. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their regularly scheduled meeting on October 15, 2018, and forwarded docket number 18-44 to the council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the planned business commercial zoning classification for the annexation area. This council has conducted a public hearing on November 13, 2018, as required by law. This council has adopted the fiscal plan for the annexation area, therefore, the annexation area generally located on the east side of North State Road 39, approximately one-tenth of a mile south of 300 North, and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the eastern boundaries of the annexation area, is hereby declared annexed to and declared to be part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and rights ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby assigned to Council District IV and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of the ordinance. The annexation area has assigned the planned business commercial zoning classification, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage by this council, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2018-21 is read on second reading. Any public comment? Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion?
Should we move ordinance 2018-21 to be passed?
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-21, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, this is Councilman Jones. Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that ordinance passed unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, my header, I know, next item up is ordinance 2018-22, which is the Animal Control Ordinance. Unfortunately, I for, I seem to have lost the suggested changes that were recommended to me by Councilman Wheat, so we're gonna, if it's okay with council, we'll hold that one over for one more meeting.
Thank you.
To reflect those changes. That includes what I have for old business, anything from council on old business?
No, sir.
Okay, then move on to new business. The first item up is the Splashpad Project Funding Food and Beverage Request. I think John and Kevin are probably going to attack team this one.
I think, yeah, thank you all for your time this evening. John and I have been working on this Splashpad project at Admiral Longley Park, and we went through a bidding exercise over the last 30 days, and we have issued a conditional notice of award to J.C. Rittberger, they're a Zionsville-based general construction, general contracting firm, and that notice of award was contingent upon final funding approval, which is why we are before you tonight. If I could get some up on the screen, I can share a little bit about the project with everyone. Let me go the other direction. There it goes. Oh, that's hot. I can't see it here, but you can see it up there. So, this is the, this is artist's rendering of the Splashpad project, as you can see there. This is located in Admiral Longley Park, just north of the existing playground equipment, just south of the parking lot that's most often used by the Lebanon Youth Football League. So, just, this is just some information that was provided to us by the designer and also by the firm Vortex, who supplies the actual play features, the spray features. So, just some, again, some thoughts in there, it's more than just entertainment, this becomes, this comes a place, this becomes a part of your community, a ritual, as it says up there, where people will familiarize themselves with this part of the community, with this activity, that becomes sort of a tradition, a place that people will go to, to enjoy these features. As it says, foster growth, imagination, and interactions among your community, just one more place, one of those happy interactions that we can begin to develop between our citizens. And so, we think this is a great move for the community, and we're excited to be a part of it. Again, there's some more of the rendering, there's kind of a theme here, if you, if you look at it, you know, you can see some features that are, there's a frog there, there's some other features, so this is kind of playing on the wetland aspect, the natural habitat aspect that is around the conservation club. Again, and some increases there on the size, again, there's that frog structure that we're talking about, you see a snail over here, some other water features that mimic some of the plants that you might see growing around the pond at the conservation club. Again, a couple more images here. This has got play features that could be used by, you'll see, all sizes, you know, from the toddlers up to the older kids, the young, and young at heart can all enjoy this. It's even fully ADA accessible, so you see, I think this would be a great amenity for our families, really, to create these new experiences, new atmospheres, new rituals throughout our park system. There's a top-down view, so I won't spend too much time on getting into the details of this, but that's how the fixtures will lay out, and so that's the project in a nutshell, so I don't know if anyone, if everyone had a chance to see that, so we wanted to at least first, before we get into the funding of this, walk you through... walk you through what it is that we're asking you to fund. If I can have that back up there, we can get into a bit of the numbers here. We'll jump over to this spreadsheet here. So you can see, this is the budget as it stands right now for the project. So again, the base bid that we opened, which is for the installation and construction of the spray pad, spray park, is for $443,000. We are looking at a direct purchase of the equipment, so the actual Vortex-supplied water features of $145,000 approximately. Actually, I believe the final numbers are coming in closer to $142,000. We have some estimated building renovations that are still under design. We're gonna renovate an existing wellhouse, an old abandoned wellhouse that's currently only housing some electrical equipment for Lebanon Utilities. They have given us permission to, and are working with us so that we can put our pumping and equipment and other control equipment in that facility. So that gives you a total construction cost of about $638,000. Moving on down, there's some owner-provided furnishings. These are things like benches and trash cans, picnic tables, that we can supply or choose not to. There's enough seating built into this program that we wouldn't have to necessarily supply additional supplementary things, but those are recommended by the design consultant looking at that. We've also been working with our design consultants and J.C. Ripberger to look at some potential value engineering. That's what the VE stands for. We think there's some savings that we can realize as we go through the actual construction of the project, totaling about $37,000. You know, these are things like reducing the amount of colored concrete, some standard, reducing to some standard concrete patterns. So again, there's about $14,000 in some of the concrete details that we can remove. Reducing the amount of litter and recycling containers can save us about $1,200. Eliminating some seat wall in favor of some benches is a $12,000 savings. Changing from the natural stone quarry block, limestone benches to a precast product will save us about $2,500. Eliminating some of the shower and the drinking fountain on the building, those are things that aren't necessarily required, that could save us about $2,000. Minimizing some of the planting beds that were proposed, again, $1,500, and reducing some shrubs, approximately $4,000. So that's where that $37,700 comes from. We realize the project is over, what we had wanted to spend on the project. So we're trying to get some of the money out of there to get the project cost back down. The engineer's estimate for the installation was somewhere in the neighborhood of $350 to $375, depending on some options. So as you can see, the Ripberger proposal was at $443. So there's roughly $100,000 of increased costs that came in there. And then the other big increase to the project was when we made the decision to go from a system that would simply drain to waste, take the water out of the municipal water supply system and put it right into the sanitary sewer system. This system was converted and designed as a recirculating system. So it's got your standard package of pool filtering equipment. So the water is recirculated, so it reduces the amount of water we're using. It reduces the amount of sanitary sewer treatments that has to go through our plant and then also reduces that sanitary sewer utility bills. The other things that it also does is when you go to that type of system, it adds some neat features to the spray pad. You get more water at the spray pad. You get bigger and better features. You get more spray out of your spray pad. So there's some other benefits to go into that system. We've got design fees also in there. Moving on to some soft costs, as you look down the spreadsheet, this is already under contract, $46,600. We're anticipating some general construction inspection and construction administration that would be about $15,000. And then I'm holding a 10% contingency in this. So we're getting a total of soft costs of $128,000, $129,000 roughly. Leads us to a total project cost of about $741,000. Again, that includes the contingency, so that's under seven, you know, if we don't need that contingency. So the park board appropriation already funded the project to the tune of approximately $300,000. So what we're looking at is a gap here and asking for a request from Food and Beverage would be for $441,290. I would offer that that would be not to exceed, as that does include contingency, and any money that we would not spend out of that contingency would go back into the, uh, back into the Food and Beverage Fund.
Okay. John, you have anything?
I, no, Kevin did it very eloquently. That's, uh, in the audience today also is Park Board President Lori Gross and Board Member John Lastly there to support. If you have any questions, be happy to answer anything that you'd like.
Where exactly is it going at Abner Longley?
Excuse me?
Where's it going at down there in the park?
I can pull up one more image if they turn the screen back on.
Over by the nature trail, across from the football sledding hill, if you're familiar with that, right there at the edge of the trail that's going back into nature.
There's currently a swing set there that'll have to be moved.
Yeah, the Parks Department will demo the, uh, there's a slide that needs to be moved and also a swing set, and we'll take care of moving those. Also, removing a mulberry tree, which is happiness to us to cut it down.
Do you have a map there, Kevin?
You know, I can, here, I can do, uh, I can do it this way.
I've got it.
Switch back and forth on the technologies here.
While you look for that, I do have another question for you. So looking at moving from the area as far as you're moving to a recycle system, correct? Instead of using that? How long will it take us to recoup the cost for that improvement?
You know, we're really not sure. There aren't any figures out there, but I think the estimate was like three to five years that we would recoup those costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
And through this process, we, you know, working with our designer, you know, we kind of thought originally the drain to waste, we thought, you know, cheaper option. It may be cheaper in the short term, but, you know, based on the feedback we heard from our designer and then also feedback from other municipalities, they've had better success with the circulating system.
No, I agree completely. I just want citizens to realize, hey, we're gonna recoup that. Just a little bit long-term vision.
Yeah, it's a little higher on the front end with all your filtration systems, so.
Can you help me understand the size of this? I don't see any dimensions.
I don't recall the dimension. I wanna say, um... I wanna say it's roughly 60 foot across, but I don't know that I have that specific dimension. To the question about where is this located? So you see on the plan here, this is the parking lot that's south of the football fields that are to the north. The pond that's fenced in currently around the conservation club is off this plan to the northeast. Your playground equipment, picnic shelters, and, um, and the restroom lie to the south. The restroom is to the west, the picnic shelter, and playground equipment is to the south. So that's what we're talking about. It's kind of in the southeast corner of the parking lot for the football fields.
So I've got kind of a multi-part question, but it all wraps up into the same thing.
Great.
What's, what is our annual expected operating cost, maintenance cost? And as, South Side Park traditionally has a little more vandalism than Memorial Park, is this fairly robust or do we remove these things when we're not using the splash pad? Or can you talk about that?
They will stay during the season, they'll stay there. We have lighting that we will put in, already budgeted in also. Through the lit money, the police have already got us cameras that will be installed. Vandalism's vandalism, yeah, it's gonna happen, happens all the time, as you're aware of. As far as the operating cost, minimal. I budgeted in already for this year's budget, I think a total of maybe $7,000, I believe, somewhere in that effect. And I got those numbers from other splash pads, checking out about the same size that we have.
Do we have to test the water regularly, like a swimming pool?
It will be just like a regular pool, especially since we're filtering the water. There'll have to be two daily tests, which we've already worked out operationally or wise, two tests, and we'll have to go through the state every, or through the Boone County Health Department weekly and to the state weekly. There again, we have to pass so many tests, all these tests. If we don't, they'll shut it down, so, um, yeah. It'll be treated just like a regular public swimming pool.
John, is there a holding tank for the water?
Yes, there sure is. It's not gonna be... Excuse me?
How many gallons does it take to start?
Not sure what the system is, but I know, as Kevin was saying earlier, that will help you get more by having this holding tank that lets you, allows you more pressure to put through the, so we can have the nicer features. It's gonna be a beautiful splash pad. As far as the tank, it's small enough to go in the wellhouse that we have currently there. That's why we're trying to utilize it since the Utilities has abandoned that. We asked to use that, which is great, but it's enough. It's not much. We will actually bring it in and set it in there, so.
Also mentioned too, this wasn't mentioned before, it's also button-activated, so it's not running constantly. So you have to, you come and press a button.
It's on a 15-minute timer, 20-minute timer. You can set that however you want and then it'll shut off, and that's how most splash pads are.
So I'm just saying, it's not a feature that's constantly running from dawn till dusk. It's only when people are there using.
And it'll be on a time from certain time in the morning till the evening. We'll adjust that. I hope I answered, Brent, I hope I answered your question. Mike, did I answer yours? Is that good?
Yes.
Are we gonna fence this? Do we anticipate that or does it need to be?
Not at this time. We want a kind of open setting, but in the future, if we see a necessity to, absolutely, yeah. There again, fencing is minimal, something we could do in-house or very cheaply.
Will it be monitored during operational hours or have lifeguards or someone there to kind of keep an eye and make sure no one gets hurt and things like that?
Great question. There are no lifeguards that'll be necessary because the depth is not there. It's a zero depth, so there... But will we monitor? Yes, we'll have lifeguards down taking samples at least twice a day. I'm kind of over the top, so we'll probably be doing it three or four times a day. There again, and police, I'm sure, are going to, it's gonna be a big attraction for us, so I'm sure we'll have public safety. I can't speak for Tyson's group, but they do a very good job of policing now. There again, we have security cameras and I think with the amount of people that we will be seeing, self-monitoring will be huge. Hope that helps.
Do we, uh, do we have to have, because it's a circulating system, open at ground level, we have to have different restrictions on pollution? People bringing things in and spilling things?
No, that's, through this system, through all the systems, there actually, even the rainwater that we collect will be very similar to the pool facility that we have now. It'll be collected and re-treated back through. It's a recirculation. There will be some water coming to waste and that's probably, that's probably one of our biggest chores because the sanitary is on the other side of the restroom that we have, on the west side of the restroom. So it's gonna be, we'll have to have some push pumps, what have you, to get it over to that. That'll probably be one of the biggest feats that we have. But as far as your wastewater now, there again, it'll all be treated through our filtration system. We'll chlorinate it, use your acids like a regular pool. And, uh, yeah, there's health codes that we'll follow. We have three or four, I think there's four of us that are now CPO-certified through the state, which is unheard of in a lot of communities to have one. There's four of us on board with that, so it'll be monitored very well, I can promise you. Does that help?
One more thing on the, uh, one of the features of this Vortex system. It's kind of a plug-and-play system, if you will. All the features actually are interchangeable and bolted down to housings that are set into the concrete. So in terms of, you don't have to remove them, but all the features could be removed in the wintertime and stored in a facility so that they're not...
Easily removed, yeah.
Yeah, easily removed. Literally, you can quickly unbolt them, quickly, there were some quick couple of connections. It can be pulled apart and then stored. It could also then, that gives you the flexibility that you could add new features in the future. So this is an interver, inter...
Interchangeable.
Interchangeable, thank you. A universal interchangeable system, so you could add new features. You can reposition features to change up the experience. So this is really the state of the art in terms of modern splash pad design.
If you have one of those features damaged, does that bring down the whole system? Can you isolate it?
No, they could be isolated. That system could be unplugged, that feature could be unplugged from the system and a cap put into place there so it's safe. And then that feature could be sent away for repairs or a replacement brought in, but you don't have to take the whole system down.
When we built the pool five years ago, there was a lot of research that went into that. At the same time, we were planning on putting something at Abner Longley Park, a splash pad, so there was a lot of research done then. They've come a long way in technology from five years ago. It's amazing what all the different features and how you can change them. So you'll be able to change even what we have to make it a different look at different times. It's, I mean, it's incredible, the technology and the improvements that they've come along. But in looking in that, a lot of research went into this. I think Lori can attest, eight years ago, for three or four years, we looked into that. They've come a long way and with Kevin's help and everybody, you know, the research, we've done a lot more research on this, so I hope we're helping you. Any other, yes?
I have one more question. We talked, Kevin talked about if they had to send a piece of equipment away to get repaired or something, something happened. Is there a warranty on the work itself and on the instruments or the things that they put out there? I know we have insurance, I understand that, but warranty to me is pretty important that we don't have to pay for it if it breaks or falls apart after the first year or freezes or something like that would cause a problem.
I can speak, on the construction end of it, normally it's a year warranty. On your motorized things, there's a five-year warranty, mostly on your, you know, your filtration system. Vortex came out with this new, I was at a trade show this fall. The way Vortex, they're one of the top leaders of the industry of our features. They've come a long way since we built our pool. As far as graffiti and things like that that we're really concerned about.
Right.
But yes, we can plug it like Kevin said and send it off. They'll have some type of warranty there too. Hopefully, we can set them high enough and, you know, they not get vandalized. Vandalisms happen. I told the Board of Works earlier, I think there's 16 that we prosecuted this year, or over 16 cases, and that's just ones we prosecuted. We've had a lot of others that with vandalism in different parts of the park system that we've taken care of. So we are catching them and making them pay some restitution.
You say there'll be no fence around it to start with, or there will be a fence?
To start with, no fence, yeah. We're, leave it open, you know. There again, that's our plan at this point in time. If we see it necessary, yes, a fence can go up pretty quick.
I think, you know, you're basically gonna have to put a fence around it, in my opinion, because the kids around there, I just know.
Yeah, there's a concern, there is a concern, no doubt.
Why not put it up there now and just train them that you just can't get in there after whatever time it is?
I've seen both ways in a lot of different splash pads where they have some, some have fence, some don't. I really haven't got a feel on more vandalism or not, but...
Well, you know, if...
I thought about a two-year-old, having a two-year-old too that's gonna run off and you don't want to run through the splash pad and chase them all down. That's what, I was thinking more of containing my kids, but there again, I wasn't in the plans.
Another part of the system, we mentioned the push-button actuator of the system that turns it on for a 20-minute period. That will also be on a timer, so you can't turn it on at 3:00 in the morning, you know. So it'll only turn on for the hours we want the park open. And then when it's, when it runs through its cycle, it will shut off. And then after hours, it would be, you would not be able to...
You're worried about the many bikes, the, yeah.
I mean, everything from bicycles to wild animals to all that stuff. And, you know, the more people that are on it, the more wear and tear it gets. Even if there's no running water, you know, they're gonna be playing on it until about 11:00 at night during the summer. So it just seems, you know, that you would want to not have people in there when there's no water just to keep the wear and tear down.
It's a good thought. It's a good thought.
And kind of along that line, doesn't make it clear, is this some kind of porous concrete or is there just drains so every space evenly or how does the water get out of there? And where I'm going with that is, is this some kind of special concrete and what is its estimated lifespan? And if people are using it, for example, as a skate park in March, are we gonna be facing repair bills that we're not thinking about?
That's a good question.
No, this is, this is standard, standard issue concrete. That is then sloped to drains. As John mentioned earlier, it's a zero depth, so everything will drain completely away. There's no areas that will hold water. But it's, it's, this is, you know, I mean, this is probably as industrial grade as we can make it. This is a concrete play surface. These are very well-designed, heavy-duty spray features. They're tested for, you know, kids hanging on them, things like that. Not saying they can't be broken, I would never say it's unbreakable. But, but they're, they're, they're pretty, it's a pretty tough system that we're planning to put in and with it being concrete, you know, it'd be, obviously you can, you can, you can graffiti concrete and you can do some things to concrete.
I just didn't want to see something that it's a special kind of concrete we weren't aware of and then first time somebody starts, you know, doing skateboards on it and it's damaged.
Different types of pads and things like that on top of it, that's another thought that we can go on down the road that we can add where those heights. But, yeah, we also looked at, like they have on the limestone up there, the skate, stop the skateboarders, looked at that. We looked at different things, but I think from just talking to other parks and recreation that it's not necessary.
I guess I have a question for Rob. Do you foresee any type of liability issues not putting a fence in or, or something down the road that we're not really looking at as an attorney? Something you would look at to protect the city?
Well, I mean, there's always a possibility, right? That the city has, somebody can walk down the sidewalk and we have multiple claims day, day in and day out on that. And so I think as, as John and Kevin indicated, you know, I think it's, we can wait and see and if we're put on notice that things are happening, then we probably need to take some appropriate steps to, to address it. But I don't know that it's any different than a, than walking down the sidewalk and, and.
The only reason I ask, what are the splash pads I've seen around Indiana, they all have, they're all fenced in. And so this one's unique that it's not. I've seen the one in Greencastle and it's fenced in and at 8:00 or something in the morning when they open up for the kids, there's a person there that unlocks the gate and it's right next to their local pool. And they do have people that monitor it and walk through it and things like that. So I'm just a little concerned liability-wise that we're not keeping a closer eye on it.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, I know we'll work with Lamar Insurance and make sure we're covered and protected in that regard. But I think it's, if, if all of a sudden we find that there are vents happening, then we need to take appropriate steps.
We could install very quick. If that's a contingency on the monies too, we can, we can.
No, I'm just.
And by the way, you went to Greencastle, what did you think of that splash pad? Was it well received?
Oh, yes, yes. We were there for a week during some training and kids, again, every morning at 8:00, 8:30, they were lined up to get into the.
And we can keep it open sooner or earlier, we can open it and close it later. A lot of times, kids go back to school. That's one of the big benefits that I've seen. We don't need the lifeguards because we don't have them anyway. And there, they can still get wet. It's 90 degrees in September. That's been a bit, but the designer at, if I'm not mistaken, is the exact same one that we got, so.
From Greencastle?
Yeah, so you'll see a lot of similarities, I assume.
And we talked about fencing with them, you know, and they didn't, basically they sort of indicated, there's not a right or wrong answer to the question of whether or not you fence it or not. Some communities choose to, others choose not to. In their book of business and they do a lot of splash pad design, it's about 50/50 is the way they described it to us. I think one of the things that they cautioned us and they were, you know, they recommend more of the non-fencing is the take I took away from the conversation. But, you know, in their opinion is that to build a fence that truly secures it becomes so obtrusive and unattractive that you don't want to do it. You know, I mean, a four-foot fence that might look attractive and keep kids in is not gonna keep a kid out who wants to jump on something in the middle of the night, you know? So to put eight-foot fences around everything is not always the, the message you want to portray in your park system. It's kind of how the conversation went with our.
I mean, that's a good conversation, but you're talking about quite a big investment that needs to be some addressed. I mean, whether it's liability or something, that's a big investment. I don't know what, how other communities view it, but it is a big investment. And I think it's not unreasonable to be thinking about how to secure it in some way. I don't think that's, shouldn't, I think that should be part of the discussion.
And I'm not saying it's, it's unreasonable request, you know, that's part of the conversation. It's part of the conversation that we spent a lot of time talking about and this is, this is sort of the result of those conversations, right or wrong. And we can, we can have those conversations here and ultimately, these are decisions that are made by this body. You know, I, I would also maybe offer, I think Rob touched on this, that, you know, maybe we should talk with our, our insurance provider and is there a significant savings that they see in their industry? You know, is there a savings in the way of premiums? Is there some statistics related to the frequency of incidents, whether it's fenced or not? You know, we're happy to have those conversations.
I think the aesthetic argument is kind of 50/50. I mean, you're, you've got a big 60-foot piece of concrete for about half the year that's just got nothing on it. So the aesthetics part is not a really good argument in my mind. I think it's more like, how do we want to protect it? You know?
I would say in my experience.
Because it's gonna have everything cleared off for six months of the year, that's not an aesthetic view at that point.
I agree with what he was saying though, that unless we put an eight-foot, you know, substantial fence around it, a four-foot fence will essentially, other than keeping kids on the splash pad, you may not want your two-year-old running off, I could see that being a reason, but for security, a four-foot fence does nothing. So, and, and I, you know, sitting here thinking about it and obviously with my background, my first thought is I'm worried about vandalism and all that, but I don't know that a fence is really gonna be the answer to that because again, if we put a four-foot around it and a teenager wants to go vandalize, he's gonna hop right over that fence. If we put an eight-foot fence up, it looks like Stalag 13 and that's not sending a good message either, so.
Well, and it's probably the reason I think we thought the cameras were important, right? And why we have it, you know, we will have record of it, of something does happen, you know? So that was part of the thought of having it covered with the security cameras as well and the lighting.
I guess my thought, just what little I know about it, I'd like to see all the apparatus unbolted and capped off during the off-season. I think that's just.
That's a given.
An attractant.
I think we have to do that, yeah. And for the longevity of them.
Exactly.
And I wasn't stating earlier that you should consider not, but these are all weather fixtures, they're not gonna be damaged by going through the winter. I would agree with you.
And just one last final thing on the fence. You know, the fence, it's maybe not the best-looking thing, but I don't think it looks like Stalag 13 of the tennis courts. They got fence, they have a fence around it and they just look like tennis courts with a fence around it.
That's keep the balls in.
Correct. So now you see a fence around, fence around the, the, you know, the splash pad, it just looks like part of the splash pad.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that bad. Anyway, I'd vote for a fence, but I'll go along with what, with your plan, you know, do it later.
Trust me, if we see vandalism and it's, you know, occur, reoccurring, yeah, that fence won't be long behind.
They're doing a good job down Stokes too. I think they're putting out a lot of angels these days, so that maybe the kids aren't as hungry as it was when I was down there.
You know, what I might offer is, is I, you know, went through the budget, there's a $67,000 line in the budget for contingency. That's, that's more than enough to do a fence project. So in the meantime, if this was something that the, the council would want to fund and that contingency is included in that funding proposal, we can run those, we can run those traps, have those conversations with insurance. We can get estimates on what a fence might, might cost for us. And then that's something we could, we could bring back to this body to discuss. And like I said, if, if there's a contingency of $67,000 in there, I would guess it's, you know, 10 to 20% of that, we could, we could cover the fence if we, if we determine that that's the best course of action.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or comments?
When would the, when would this be up and running, if you've got funding?
We're planning May.
Okay.
Yes.
The contract requires it to be substantially complete by May 1. So that's, that's our intention, that it's up and running May 1.
What's your definition of substantially complete?
Available for intended use.
Got it. To make sure, I heard that, I heard that somewhere in the interstate one time. What's that mean?
That just means, you know, maybe it's not got all the flowers planted. Maybe the last bench and trash can isn't put in place, but the splash pad is operational and ready for use.
Got it, thank you. And make sure everyone else is probably thinking the same thing out there at home.
Yeah, we didn't have the pool open this year and it, for some reason in May, if you can remember, 90 degrees. It was, it was one of those that, boy, I wish we had a splash pad then. Same thing with September, we closed it down because we didn't have guards.
I know, my wife gave me a hard time about it, I understand that, so.
Okay, all right.
Any public comment?
No, that's good.
Lori, do you want to say anything from the park board perspective?
Don, I have an idea with your backup lifeguards. Train the park board to be your backup lifeguard after the kids go back to school. There you go.
They were gonna get recruited to sit at different spots, but there aren't requirements for lifeguarding where they just had to say, okay, thumbs up, down the slide you go.
Yeah, I saw that on TV. It was on TV, right? Yeah, maybe 25 years ago, maybe a little longer. Don't say anything. I just want to thank the mayor and Kevin and the park board. This has been a long time coming. It's been something that we've been hoping for, for a long time. And I really think our parks, to me, are one of our best assets in the city. And now that we've acquired the Conservation Club, we have so many options down there. And I really have hoped that we could always do this down at Abner Longley because we haven't really done anything special down there. And it's time. And everybody's worked hard and I appreciate everybody's time that they put in. And I'm really hoping that you will agree to fund it because I think it'll be a great thing for Abner Longley. And I understand, we've all had concerns about the vandalism. My hopes that with this piece of, with this new entity down there, that more people will take pride in that park and they'll probably deter some of the vandalism. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Any other public comment? Okay. Any further discussion from council? And Kevin, just remind me, what was the, or John, what was the final request number?
400 and.
Sorry.
441-290.
290, yeah.
The final request number was 441,290.
Thank you, Kevin.
Not to exceed.
Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion. I move to appropriate not to exceed 441,290 towards the Abner Longley splash pad.
From?
Run the food and beverage fund.
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second, further discussion?
Are you taking all the money out from 2018 or are you gonna split it up 2018, 2019?
We haven't spent good $50,000 this year on food and beverage, Sean.
Little question?
No, I'm trying to think, we should take it out 2018.
It doesn't matter.
It's a non-reverting fund, so if, if we appropriated tonight, we, we would be able to cumber it from this, from this year.
What's her amount this year in approximate food and beverage?
The balance, 1.9 million. But we didn't appropriate the money this year or for next year, so it's just gonna come directly from the fund.
Understand, thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those here say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that request is adopted. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's a big win for the Southside as a town. That's a big win.
All right, next up is the NDOT Northern Interchange Support Discussion. I'll kind of turn this over to Kevin. This was on your agendas as a resolution, but this actually did not require a resolution. It's really more of just an approval, but I'll turn it over to Kevin to explain why, what we're doing here.
One second, I'm seeing if I could modify my. Okay, there we go. Now I can see what you're seeing up there. Well, there we go. Okay, so what we want to talk about tonight is the, the northern interchange. What might be, I believe the northern interchange today is exit 141. This could become exit 142, 3, 4, somewhere in that range, depending on exactly where it would be positioned. What you see on the screen before you right now is, is the, is some, the images, the option images from the interchange feasibility study. There were three options that were discussed in that feasibility study. So you have the, I'm gonna start here with the last one. This was to reconstruct it basically in the current position. So you might recognize some of the geometry in this area from the current Lafayette Avenue, State Road, or US 52 interchange whereby that interchange would be reconstructed in that general area, a new road projected across Prairie Creek and on to 250 North. The second option looked at a configuration that would follow the current alignment of 300. So again, there's an existing bridge over the interstate at County Road 300 North, so this would be reconstructing that bridge into a full access interchange and, and again, relocating State Road US 52 to the interchange as well as relocating State Road 39 to the interchange. And then the final option, the option that was, that was highly, is most recommended by the interchange feasibility study is what you see here, which is looking at a new interchange somewhere north of the current 300 North interchange, a new greenfield location. Again, US 52 would be rerouted to the interchange on the west side and 39 would be rerouted to the interchange on the east side. This ended up being the most favorable location for that interchange, looking at all aspects of project development, project consideration, that federal highway mandates, things like land acquisition costs, historical, historical aspects, historical, you know, disturbances such as like the Beck Cemetery property that might be disturbed by the project. Looks at environmental issues like existing wetland and, and other sensitive areas, as well as areas you can see there in the green like existing park and recreational facilities. That is the Trophy Club golf course. So it looks at all those things as it scores projects and, and those are the criteria that we use to develop this, this alignment as the most favorable and most feasible. Keep in mind that this is just a feasibility study as it stands to date. Where and exactly how the final interchange is configured will be determined throughout the next phases of the project. But this is the, the final location that we looked at as the, one of the most probable and feasible locations. So that's, that's where we stand today. What we are proposing, what I am proposing tonight is that we submit this project for NDOT's 2024 Fiscal Year Call for Projects. So every year, NDOT puts out a call for projects and local public agencies as, as Lebanon are encouraged to submit. We have also been highly encouraged by our local LPA coordinators to submit this project and, and that is what we are, are hoping to gain your support to do. So as part of the project, the main, the main task for this body is to, is to issue a financial commitment letter. You've all received a draft version of this financial commitment letter and you can see it on the screen now. This is relatively a simple letter that just basically states, as we've said, the mayor and city council and fiduciary bodies for the city would, would like to express their support and financial support for a project. and financial support for a project. I would offer the caveat that this is not a binding financial commitment. These commitments change from time to time. They change on almost any project I've ever been involved with. So this does not put you into a situation where you are committing monies today for 2019 and into the future. This is just your best case, guess, case, best guess case of how you would fund the project if you would choose to do so. And again, we can change funding strategies in the future. We can alternate, alternate these, these issues. We can even delay or cancel these commitments at, at a future date with no real consequence to the city of Lebanon. But we would like to propose moving this project forward. And we would like to go ahead and submit this project for that 2024 fiscal year call. So this project lays out how that, how that overall project would be constructed, if you will, or how it would go through the NDOT and federal highway process. This would be federal money involved in this project. You can see down there at the right corner, the total project cost. And this includes all phases of the project. It includes the relocation of US 52, it includes the relocation of State Road 39. At an all-in design, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction, and construction engineering, all phases of the project come in at a total of $68 million. Of that, we are proposing that we would submit a standard financial commitment of 20%. So if you round that up to 70 million, give or take, we're talking about a $14 million commitment from the city. This table here begins to describe how that might come about. So again, you see here on this side, down the left-hand side of this spreadsheet, these are the phases that, that NDOT would recognize. This would be professional engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction, and construction engineering or construction inspection is what that would more commonly be referred to. So those are the costs that we've assigned to those various, those various levels. Down below that, you would see for each column, how that would, how that would shake out in terms of what the local match would be versus what the federal match. So you can see as we get into the early engineering of the project, that would be 100% funded by the city. As you look at then 2022, which is when we would typically start right-of-way acquisitions, that project there would be again funded by the, funded by the, the city at a local match of 90, $980,000. I think I misspoke earlier. It is not 100% funded in terms of 2019 by the city. 1.3 million would come from the city. 5.28 would come from the federal match for a total of $6 million. Similarly, in 2022, 980,000 from the city's portion, 390, 3 million 920,000 from federal highway for a total of 4.9 million. Then when we get to 2024, which is really the heavy construction with utility relocation, construction and construction engineering, that's where the numbers get a bit larger. So you can see there in 2024, the total is 56.9 million dollars that would need to be expended that year. And of those expenses, 11.3, 11.4 would come from the, the city on our local match. And the federal highway would kick in another 45 and a half million. So you can see that further broken down there to the right, right of this yellow column, what the local matches would be for each of the, the categories. For a total of 13.68 million. The federal match would have a total of 54.7 million. And that all totals up to the, the total project cost of 68 million. Going further into some details here, we've proposed to the state, and this is required as part of the, the call for projects, a general plan for how those funds would be accumulated by the city. Again, this is my best case, my best guess at a, at a scenario that I think is feasible. I've worked through this with UMBH and they feel as though that this is probably our best case scenario as well. But again, that's up for you to decide if you would want to make this financial commitment and how specifically we would write this letter. So looking at 2019 is the first year where we would need to, to provide funds to the tune of 1.3 million. What I am proposing is approximately $500,000 allocated from the general fund surpluses. In talking with, with UMBH, some information that they provided, that they are currently projecting approximately a $4.4 million balance at the end of 2018. That is an operating percentage, so a percentage of our operating budget proposed. That's 41% of our, of our operating budget proposed for next year. They're saying, they told me that is well above the recommended percentage of 20 to 25%. So just a few things there that we talked about with them so that they don't see a detriment to the city's financial picture by spending down some of our, our surplus general fund monies. In fact, they're telling me that we are being encouraged by the Department of Local Government Finance to spend down some money that we, we're holding more than, than is typically, typically recommended at that 20 to 25% range. So, so that's what we're looking at there. I would propose, again, the second line of 2019 funding would be approximately $200,000 funded from, from food and beverage. And, sorry, I'm trying to read my notes here. We have, expected at the end of 2018 would be approximately $1.7 million. That would, and then at the end of 20, 2021, that, that fund balance is projected to be down to about 1.38 million in food and beverage. Again, those are assuming that we typically spend or we typically allocate $500,000 a year to food and beverage. And this is also taking into account the, the food and beverage backing of the current Lebanon Gateway Marketplace bond. So it is, it is looking at the full financial picture for the next few years and showing us that we have 1.6 to 1.4 million dollars in that food and beverage fund that is currently projected. And so next year I would propose to spend approximately 200,000 towards this project. The other one that I'm, I'm proposing would be $600,000 from the redevelopment commission. The current redevelopment commission balance is 2.3 million projected at the, at the end of this year. That one we can need to probably talk about some more because although this is not in the Tiff district, we have to ask ourselves, is this benefiting the Tiff district? The rationale that, that we're walking through with UMBH is that this involves the relinquishment of 39 through town, which is in the Tiff district. And so this would benefit that relinquishment or this would be required to achieve that relinquishment, that we have an alternate route for 39. So that's currently the, the position that we're in on how we can justify spending redevelopment dollars in this area. And so that, there is how we would get to the 1,320,000 projected for next year. $500,000 from the general surplus fund, 200,000 from food and beverage, and 620 from redevelopment commission. Again, up for your discussion and your approval. Those numbers could be drastically shifted around, but those were some, some general recommendations that, that I made. And again, we vetted that with, with UMBH. Looking in into 2022, CCD, our cumulative capital development fund. We typically get about 200,000, just shy of 200,000 dollars deposited into that account every year from the state. We are currently using that money to fund the next phase of Indianapolis Avenue, so Phase 2. So that project will be done in 2019 and 2020. So we would have then, the end of 2020 and 2021, we would be collecting that approximate 200,000 dollars in CCD funds. So again, UMBH has helped me to, to vet that and they feel as though that is an achievable number that we would have available in that fund. Again, then looking at a surplus general fund amount or, or allocation of 380,000 and a food and beverage allocation of, again, 200,000. So again, to remind you that the, the expected balance of the general fund at the end of 2020 would be 4.28 million. That does not count the 500,000 that I was projecting that we would spend in 2019. But again, we're looking at a 39, 40% percentage to our operating fund that we're currently holding and, and UMBH is recommending 20 to 25%. So those are the, the proposal for 2022. 400,000 from CCD, 380,000 from food and beverage, 200, 380,000 from surplus and 200,000 from food and beverage totaling the $980,000 commitment that we would need to make to the state. Then in 2024, when we actually get to construction, a couple of things. We looked at relinquishments that the state has undertook in the last few years. One would be State Road 44 in Franklin. So very similar sized community, very similar things going on in Franklin that we're trying to do. And they received approximately 3.5 million dollars per mile for their relinquishment of State Road 44. Another one that we looked at was State Road 267 in Hendricks County. That was probably a little bit more of a rural section that was relinquished, but they received over a million and a half per mile for that. So, you know, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 5 to 10 million dollars if we just base it off of those two recent relinquishments that NDOT has undertook. And so I'm conservatively putting in there that we could get right in the middle of that approximately 600, 6,380,000. That number could go as high as 10 million. We've also been encouraged by federal highway and the state to apply for a BUILD grant. That BUILD actually should be an acronym, that's B-U-I-L-D, which is, is the federal government's new tiger grant program for looking at economic development for, for cities. So we're projecting that if we were to receive that BUILD grant award, that that could be upwards of 5 million dollars to the project. Why submit something that I'm not for sure we get? Well, one, we've already been looking at the BUILD grant application with a federal highway and with NDOT. We're looking at both applying for BUILD grant funds that would look at the widening of, of 65 north of Lebanon, as well as then coupling this project so that they could happen simultaneously or concurrently, if you will. So that's where we get the 2024 local match dollars of 11.38 million. Again, for a total project cost for the city of 13.6 million, 13.7 million. And that's 20% of the $68 million project that could be funded for, for the proposed new northern interchange. So we mentioned before on the agenda, this was put down as a, as a resolution. A resolution is, we do not need something that formal. We would just need some sort of, of motion if you would choose to do so in support of this financial commitment and the issuance of that letter.
So again, I want to stress what Kevin said, this is not an actual binding. This is, this is fair to say, this is the next step in this process.
Correct.
We, we went through the feasibility study, we got our local input. The state has encouraged us to say, well, now you need to submit that project to us. This is how we go about doing that.
Yes.
At least puts it on the radar that shows the state that we're willing to commit.
Yep.
You know, the exact form and method how that happens, that's to be determined. Could be a rough, rough outline of that, so. You know, I think we hear about all the time about the traffic challenges on 39. You know, unfortunately, I think if this has been built 10 years ago, we wouldn't be in the situation. But we are here where we are and, you know, this is, this is the speed that we have to work, that we have to think this far out ahead. So this is the, like I said, wanted to, you know, with the, with the call being up on December 7th, we at least wanted to have council discussion about this. If we were comfortable submitting this, this at least proposed plan to NDOT, so. Any questions for Kevin on this?
My first question is, okay, on the fiscal year 2019. So this isn't a commitment, but at what point would they call the city and go, hey, by the way, send us 1.3 million dollars?
Yeah, so if, if you're awarded funds, so the, the state and federal highway department look at this and say, yeah, that's, that's a project we want to partner with them on, we're awarded that. We would then, we would then go into the process of selecting, selecting engineers and going through the next phases of, of interchange justification studies and, and finally getting to design of, of this roadway. But at each step, you know, there's, there's a, there's a pretty intense and complicated approval process as you go through that. And it's not till you get to the end of the process where the, where the state looks at that and says, okay, all your contracts are in place, your consultants are in place, we're ready to start that project. We're ready to issue a notice to proceed like we would with a contractor. And it's at that point when they say, we will issue a notice to proceed as soon as your funds are shown to be deposited into the appropriate accounts. So it, it kind of works in that system that at any point you can call them up and say, not sure we're going to have the funds, can we push it back? And there's limits to how far you can push it back. For example, you know, Indianapolis Avenue was supposed to, Phase 2 was supposed to be under construction last year. Given some issues with the first phase and how that was lagging with some disputes that we had with the contractor, we called them up and said, we'd like to push that back. They said, no problem. And we have not deposited a single dollar towards Phase 2. We are getting very close to where they would require those things to be deposited as we're, as we're getting ready to go to letting. But it's not till they're actually ready to issue what NDOT would call a purchase order that would allocate the federal funds to the project that they require to see our matching dollars.
So the studies and the preliminary work before we get to that point, is that something we're going to have to pay for?
Yes.
So there'll be costs in addition to the 1.3 million?
No, no, that, that 1.3 includes all that.
Okay, that's the bottom total if it goes.
Exactly. And I would say, you know, I, I think we've been a little conservative in how we put this together. There are other funds that are available. There are federal earmarks, there are state earmarks that we could look after. There are, there are other, there's a host of other funding opportunities. So we're looking, trying to fund this out of our own pocket. And I will say, without any new debt to the city, we're not proposing a bond structure here. This is just funding with existing cash on hand. But again, we will go through all those traps in trying to find those additional dollars. And again, we can change this funding schedule as we, as we see fit, you know. So if we can find additional federal money or additional state money, there's a host of programs that we can go after for various grant programs. We can always plug these in as we go through the project. The, the key is you go through that process is just to communicate with NDOT when you're proposing things, when you're applying for new grants, and how successful or unsuccessful you are as you go through that process.
And one quick question, then I'll relinquish the floor. You said 1.7, the estimated balance in food and beverage, does that count the 450,000 we just voted?
That's my understanding. They were projecting that at the end of this year and they were assuming we were going to spend the full 500,000 dollars allocated in the budget.
That, that's based on the collection that came in this year to it?
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but that one, the, the 1.6 is what we have today, is that not correct? And that, that includes what we've not spent for 18.
I think we have over 1.9 something today.
Okay, so it's 1.9, you still have to take out 441,000 dollars or whatever. So that leaves it down to 1.5.
But we also got the 400,000 dollars in this year in collections as well.
I understand that, but that's also included in the 1.9.
Well, that, all I guess...
The collections for this year or not?
Yes.
What, what I'm stating is the 1.69 was the number provided to me by UMBH that they projected we would have January 1 of 2019, assuming we followed our budget and spent 500,000 this year. So I, I'm depending on the information they gave me. I've, I've not, I've not vetted those numbers. I, I won't pretend to be an accountant that could, that could look at that.
Have you checked with the clerk's office about the monies that are available?
I just got this information today. I have not had a chance to, to go over this with Tanya. I mean, I've, I've went over the, the proposal of the letter as I sent to you, but the conversation with UMBH was not able to happen until earlier today.
She knows where all the money is.
I know.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to what we're doing here. But I just want to make sure that there are no surprises as you talk your way down this list. I mean, if, this council needs to stay in touch with you as you go along. Whatever you find out, and soon as you find out what the next step is, we need... you find out what the next step is, we need to know.
Absolutely.
Because I tell you what we don't want to do is we don't want to see a $3 million bill dropped on our lap and said, oh, in two weeks, you got to come up with it.
So I think that the, so we said the first step tonight, right? And then the next step will then, I mean, NDOT will tell us whether or not they accept the project. So I mean, that's kind of the next, if, if they say, yes, we, we're going to fund this project, then that's when we start having the really
Yeah.
Discussion about where the money comes from, where decision making. I mean, at this point, this is just a theoretical exercise.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is if and when NDOT says is go, I don't want to, and it's going to say you're going to go in six months and five and a half months later, you come back to us and say, oh, by the way, we, here's two weeks and you're going to see the money. I want to know at the sixth month, the same day you find out.
And we'll, we'll share that with you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Kevin?
No, I'm good with it.
Anybody out in the public?
Yeah, any public comment?
I actually did have one quick question. And this is, this is more of a long-term thing because we could probably have a big discussion just on this topic. But the only part afterward, I've had time to think about this now, is the abandonment of 39 because we may have to agree to disagree. I don't think most folks are going to turn and go through this new route. It may take a little traffic off, but whatever. So is the abandonment of 39 an integral part of this? Do we have to do it that way? Or was that just something we threw in there to maybe kind of get some added benefit?
Right. We, we don't have to do it that way, but it does provide 10, up to 10 million dollars of revenue towards the project.
And, and that really is the crux of my concern is, before I would agree to that, I'd like to hear from maybe Zionsville or Franklin and hear them say, yeah, this is sustainable. We've got enough money that we can take care of these formerly state roads. Because, you know, Lebanon Street, if we take over three miles basically
Yeah.
Of, you know, heavily trafficked road.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that my, whoever follows me in this seat doesn't suddenly discover we've got a deteriorating road and we don't have enough money in the bank to pay for it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's just my concern.
No, I, it's a valid question, you know. And we, to, to put it into some perspective, we have about 98, say 100 miles, 100 centerline miles of street in the city right now. And we get approximately a million dollars from the state through the, the MVH and, and local road and street funds that we use to fund maintenance of, of the street. So I'm not going to say it's a direct correlation, but we would be talking about adding three miles to our 100 miles. So again, it's not probably a fair comparison to say it's a 3% increase, a $30,000 increase. So I couldn't justify for you exactly what the cost would be to maintain that road. It, it would be tough to, to, to say over the long span of that road, what it will cost. I will say it's probably one of the better maintained roads in the city because it's been maintained by the state all these years.
Right.
Not without its problems, don't get me wrong. And, and there's some pavement deterioration already showing on that. And our hope would be that any, any resurfacing that's needed would be part of this relinquishment in addition to the funds that we would collect. They did just upgrade two years ago, all the ADA ramps, you know. So the road's in, in pretty good shape. And we certainly have our share of roads that are in much, much worse shape. We would be then taking over three miles of, of maintenance. Again, it's not outside of our city limits. So I don't think, I think it would be hard to justify exactly how much more we spend maintaining one road in the middle of the city. You know, it, it would be hard for me to justify, pick any road in the city, what exactly we spend on one given road in terms of maintenance. So that's difficult for me to say. We would be increasing our road inventory, but I don't want to say that that's, that's a huge increase of MVH or LRS funds. I did some research today. Mr. Campbell asked me to look into this. How is MVH and LRS funds distributed? Well, it's a very complex process. I don't want to pretend to be the expert. But it's more based on the population of your city than it is the, the centerline miles. So Tanya's nodding her head. She probably knows more about than I do.
Based on the population.
Yeah.
Right.
So that money goes to the county, then the county distributes it to the various municipalities based on your population. Well, it's about a 60% based on your population, 40% based on your road miles. So it's, it's a, it's a complex, you know, formula that they use to put that together.
Right.
So I'm not going to tell you that it's any kind of a significant increase in LRS or MVH funding for taking this over. But there would be a, there would be a small increase.
I, I guess my concern is that I don't think anybody would argue that's our heavily, most heavily traveled road in the entire city.
Yeah.
And it's going to wear out, I think faster than Meridian Street or Patterson Street or et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that, again, our, our, the people that follow us don't get stuck for a great big bill or have to live with a road that's full of bottles.
Absolutely.
That's just my concern.
It's, it's a valid, it's a valid concern. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things we got to think about. And you're right. And certainly hampering our future generations with the road that they wish they wouldn't have had is, is a difficult thing for us to consider. Again, in terms of the traffic changes, again, I would agree with you. I don't think day one or even into the near future, you would see significant change to the traffic patterns on, on Lebanon Street.
Yeah.
You, you might see some of the truck traffic divert to the new 39. And certainly the signage from NDOT's perspective would, would designate that as the truck route and discourage trucks from going through Lebanon. But of course, we still have downtown businesses that need trucks. We still have trucks going to the north side of town. So you're not going to see the trucks disappear. We would get control over that. So in terms of how we wanted to put the streetlights, how we want to do signage, how we want to do landscaping in the corridor would now be our, our responsibility. And we would have our own authority over making those changes for beautification level projects. But again, you know, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a dollars and cents and a long-term maintenance question we do have to ask ourselves.
Well, you said three miles, but part of that three miles, it's five lanes.
Yes.
So that's, you know, that's a lot.
It is.
But what about traffic lights? Do we take those over to the city? Do we have all the traffic signals?
We wouldn't. We wouldn't take over the traffic light at 32 and, and, and 39, as it says today. But the other traffic lights, you know, so at Washington, at Main, at Camp, at
Northfield.
Northfield, thank you.
Keep going. There's two more.
250.
Yes. Those, those would all then become our traffic lights to, to maintain.
And we worked hard to get rid of them.
So.
Well, we would have the authority to get rid of them, not saying, not suggesting we should.
No.
Before we stop, yeah.
But I just, what's the projected cost of upkeep on those lights going forward?
Yeah. I, I couldn't speak to that intelligently right now to tell you what that costs.
Okay. I know they'll last for a while, but sooner or later, you know, it's going to be a $200,000 fix.
You know, replacing them, fully replacing them, yeah, those are $150,000 projects to fully replace all the stoplight controls at an intersection.
It might not be our choice. We might be mandated by somebody to change them, you know.
Yeah.
For some reason. Okay, I'm good.
I, I have a question that, it just by looking at the map, I think is a reasonable question somebody could bring up. It's out in rural Boone County. Why is the city paying so much of this? What's, how does that work? And how would I answer that if that was asked of me as a question?
Good question. Yeah, this, this project is completely outside city limits as it sits today. It's on the edge of city limits, you know, in terms of practically speaking, how the city is growing and with the amount of projects. We've already went through tonight, several annexations that are going up into that 300 north corridor. So again, the city is probably growing to the north, especially from a residential standpoint. I think that's where we're seeing some, some current growth today. And we probably will continue because that's where we have utility opportunities to expand. It's where we have shopping and dining options that exist today. So I think you'll still continue to see that and you'll continue to see the city grow and annex in that direction. And this probably does spur some of that. But again, as it sits today, we're proposing a project that is outside of city limits in the county. I would love to say we have full county support for something like this. And that would be probably much more advantageous to us if we did. We currently don't. We've, we've approached them, although there doesn't seem to be any negative recourse with the county commissioners over a project like this. They're not prepared to financially support it at this point. May that change over the course of the next five years as we get to 2024? Who's to say? You know, a lot can happen in that time. I will say, you know, of some other projects that have been done similar to this, like the last new interchange I can really think of is, is 106th Street on I-69. That was a joint project with Hamilton County and the town of Fishers. I would love to see that happen here, that we would have some support from our friends at the county. But what we're proposing right now is, is something that I think we can completely fund on our own. And again, that's one of those other funding sources that maybe we can be successful on. Maybe we can. I won't, I don't want to stand up here and tell you that, you know, we can get some money for the county, from the county for this.
Do counties have, what I'm saying, if you partner with the county and the city, do they have, from the state, can they get matching monies?
Absolutely.
We could double that pool.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that we could, we could look at how that would increase the pool of money that would be available to us. So, you know, I think, you know, another thing that we haven't really talked about was, would be economic development opportunities. You know, there's a lot of opportunity if we look at a new interchange in an area like that where all four corners of it could be developed. And that's one of the things that scored negatively on the other interchange proposals is not all four of those corners could be developed because of, of, well, primarily because of floodplain and other issues. So to put that into perspective, so the Gateway Marketplace is a, is a project that will generate on 25 acres, approximately 17 million dollars in assessed value. I'm not saying we get four Gateway Marketplaces that would go into that area, but you would see development that would tend to be encouraged by a, a new interchange. You know, so it, it's not infeasible to think you might have significant assessed value increases in an area like that. And certainly if we were talking about four Gateway Marketplace level projects, you know, you're talking upwards of a million dollars of tax revenue that is generated, not just for the city, but the county. And regardless of whether this area is annexed into the city of Lebanon, the county still collects taxes on those parcels. So there's benefit, I think, to, to all of us in the, in the community for, for growth of this nature.
If it, or if and when it gets built, does the city then start annexation? Or?
You mean involuntary annexation?
Well, I, yeah, I didn't think about this question before I said that. I go, what does it take for that to happen? And should it happen? Or should it just stay in the county?
I mean.
Somebody's going to ask me that question. That's why I'm asking.
My policy has always been we've done, been 100% voluntary annexations. So we haven't done any non-voluntary annexations. So if you're not in the city at this time, don't want to be, nobody's going to force you.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Now, I, I think you would only see it as, as development grows, like, like you see tonight with these annexation petitions.
Okay.
Some of those are associated with real projects that you might see. Others are more speculative annexations, but they're speculating projects to be built on those areas. And, and I, I wouldn't foresee any need for the city to have a change in that policy, that we would look for voluntary annexations. We would look for projects and people that want to be in the city. And I don't, wouldn't see any need to force us, force anybody. You know, that interchange, I think, is important enough and provides enough benefit to the entire county that we would like to see it happen. We're, we're suggesting to you that we think this is good for the entire community, city and county included, regardless of where the, the, the city boundary lines are drawn.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? I don't care if I asked for public comment. Any public comment concerning this? Okay. So Kevin, well, we, we would just look for a motion to, to support the letter to NDOT. Is that what we're looking for?
I think that's sufficient, just a motion of support and issuance of the letter. You know, I would like, I think it always looks better if everyone is able to sign it. So assuming that this letter is in the form that the body feels appropriate.
Or if someone's not comfortable, we always can have where I, I, I mean, other ones we've seen where just the mayor signs it, right?
That is, that is completely appropriate that just the mayor would sign it. But again, you know, we've, we've crafted it as it sits today with a signature line for everybody. Not everybody would have to sign it. That would be, I guess, up to your, your individual position on whether to support.
Any discussion for council?
No.
Does anybody have any concerns not supporting this?
I don't.
This time then, I would entertain a motion to support and submit this letter to NDOT on the city's behalf.
I make a motion that we support this letter. Support to NDOT.
Okay. We have a motion to support. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
And we'll be sure to keep you updated what happens with that status as that moves along as well.
We wouldn't typically hear a result of the call for projects until sometime in late January.
Okay.
That would be the next time we would, we would know. At this point though, I will take your, I, I thank you for your support and we'll work with, with our consultant American Structure Point to, to finalize the details of the project and get that application submitted by
December 7.
December 7th at 5:00 PM.
Kevin, real quick, I know this is the one we were looking at and you said that that was the one, one to go with. If for some reason the state decided they wanted to reopen conversation on that, is that still on the table?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Last item I have here on, on a new business is Resolution 2018-47, which is the Patterson Street Economic Development Area. Ben, I think you have this one?
Evening, council.
This was a later edition as well.
Yeah, this was a late edition as well. It was coming together with our friends from Creek de Vol last week while I was out of the office. So we got it on today. This is relating to a project on the former Prairie Industries site. I'll attempt to do this again. For those that are familiar with the former Prairie Industries building on Patterson Street, you also know what it looks like right now. It's in pretty bad shape. And in addition to the fact that it's a significantly sized building, it's, it has a huge cost of demo, there is also significant environmental concerns with the, with what's under the ground as well. So this has been kind of a detriment to us. It's of course directly adjacent to our Big Four Trail and of course, just up the road from the project on Main Street, we're going to be doing next year as a second phase of the downtown project. So this has been kind of a, an eyesore in this area and, and one that Mr. Spitznagle didn't even really want to have to handle when he bought all these properties, but they came as a package deal. So we were actually able to identify a partner who specializes in buying properties such as this and act as kind of the intermediary wherein they clean up the property and make it development ready. And then they in turn hand it off to a developer who redevelops the site. The company's called Enviro Forensics. They're based locally at Indianapolis. And they have actually completed purchase of the site for Mr. Spitznagle. He still maintains his property to the north. And they are underway with just doing some initial demo work. And that's going to take several months before they can demo the building. The reasons before you tonight is there is a significant site prep cost associated with this as compared to your typical greenfield site, which makes a project here very, very challenging to be able to make the numbers work financially. There's a massive gap as associated, you're probably talking about between a million and a million and a half just associated with the demo and site cleanup. They're actually going to have to excavate, I can't remember how many feet of sites, like eight or 10 feet of soil they're going to have to totally excavate and dispose of from that site because of the environmental issues. So there's a significant entry cost to this site, but it was one we thought was valuable to look at just because it, it just changes this area so much. So what we're doing here tonight is a resolution that would approve the establishment of an economic development area, which is, which is the council's step to establishing a TIF district. So this would be a single-site TIF associated with this project specifically. And the purpose for that is, is to support a developer purchase bond wherein that they, they would, they would accept the increment over a 25-year period and front that money and be able to use that money to help offset, defray some of those initial site development costs. So there's no risk on the city because it's a developer purchase bond. The step tonight is really just to establish that economic development area in order to establish that TIF district so that we can then collect the increment from their project and reinvest it back into the project, or allow them to reinvest it back into the project and offset some of those significant upfront costs that are unique to this site. The project right now is proposed, the total cost is about five and a half million dollars in total with both site prep and five and a half million dollars in total with, with both site prep. And then the proposal then would be for a, um, conceptually proposed right now as a speculative industrial building. Uh, as we looked at the site with them, um, I would, I would have loved along the trail to have been able to do something more with that site or something different than industrial, uh, but with the challenges with the environmental issues, the cost, if it was even possible, the cost to clean it up to residential standards would have been so substantial that it never would have happened. Uh, plus the fact that it's still next door to an industrial building, so the marketability from a residential perspective is not that high, uh, not that, not really that, that valuable or, uh, uh, either. So, um, the best case scenario for us is to get this building demolished, get the environmental site, you know, environmental issues cleaned up, and then create a, a new, um, state-of-the-art speculative industrial building, uh, where we can create some more employment opportunities in the city. Um, so that's kind of the overview of the project. Uh, what's before you tonight is, is a resolution that would establish the economic development area, which, which allows us to get that TIF in place, uh, so we can use the increment to, um, help support the project.
But what is the, what's the money, look, it's, the tax money's collected, and then, well, no, it's not collected. They don't pay it.
Well, they, they would pay it. So, in essence, what would happen is it's, you know, they, they pay the tax bill, or whoever the property owner is at that time would pay the tax bill. And then that money then would be used to pay the debt service on a bond that was initially purchased by the developer or some other entity at the, at the, so, so, so what happens is they, they pay, they buy the bond, they guarantee the bond, they guarantee the TIF increment. As the increment's collected, then it just gets filtered back to pay off the debt service for the bond amount. So, I think we're, we're talking right now about a bond, uh, amount of about 1.25 million, uh, and then all the debt services paid by the tax increment due to the site. If for some reason the tax and, and increase ends up being less than the projected debt service, they just don't get the money back. So, there's nothing, nothing that comes back to the city. The site is also self-supporting.
So, how long is it before the city receives tax?
It'd be 25 years.
And unfortunately, you know, this was a case where just based on the condition the site was in, this really was the only way to make it feasible. And, um, you know, it's, it, it probably is one of the most contaminated sites in town.
It's a nasty site.
Yeah.
It is. Right. You, you heard it digging down eight feet. I mean, we had, we had reports of there were stuff coming off of the property. So, it is something that we definitely want to get cleaned up.
Yeah.
Um, and these, these, these developers specialize in remediating these, you know, tough cases. So, um, you know, it's a historic building.
Our last tough case in Lebanon, isn't it?
I wish, right, yeah, yeah. For, for, for this month, right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Oh, man.
It, it's one of the last really big ones. You know, we have a lot of other kind of, maybe some brownfields, but.
There, there are others smaller, you know, there are other issues, the sites with smaller issues than this that we still do have, but this is one of the last
Yeah.
very significant ones that we have. It hasn't already been addressed this year.
They make shells there for World War II, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've made all kinds of things there.
We've got historic contamination there, not just recent contamination.
Yeah. So, well, let me just say, I don't think anybody here is against this project. This would be a great use. Um, I got mine at four o'clock or a few minutes before, and I know at least one council member hasn't even seen it yet. Um, is there some crisis we have to pass this resolution tonight?
This, this is all based on a schedule to get bonds closed in February. Like I said, the project is already started, so there, this, this would get the funds to them by, um, February, in essence.
So, with a three-hour deliberation, we're going to give up 25 years of tax revenue on a site.
Well, no, no, so that's not that decision tonight. This is, this is just, just declaring it as an economic development area.
That's the ultimate goal, correct?
Yeah, but that's, but that's, you'll have plenty of time to deliberate that decision.
Yeah, there, there's no ordinance.
That's my question.
There's no ordinance before the council tonight to approve any bonds or any financial commitments.
Okay.
This is simply, as Ben indicated and the mayor indicated, establishing, uh, the TIF area, their economic development area and approving the plan.
Which, which we would want to do anyway, whether the developer was here or not. I mean, this is, this is something that needs to be done. In order to get the site remediated, we would have needed to develop this as an EDA anyway.
So, this particular resolution, 2018 dash 47, is cost neutral?
Correct.
If we pass it tonight.
This is strictly a legal procedure to declare it as an, as an economic development area.
Okay.
That's all this is.
I just want to be able, if somebody says, why did you vote on that when you were saying you hadn't really seen it?
And, and I, and I apologize for, you know, it's kind of a crazy week after Thanksgiving, but that was part of the reason why I felt comfortable bringing it tonight, to say, you know, it really is just a legal formality of us declaring it a, an economic development area. There's no
There's no commitment.
There's no financial commitment here attached at all.
Well, I have to answer to the people of Lebanon.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll be quite honest, I, I have not had the opportunity, since it did come in so late this afternoon, to even browse it. So, I'm not going to have an opportunity really to, uh, go one way or another on it.
Yeah, you go, you go, you want to read it, and you can.
Mayor and council, so I'll read through this, uh, just so that may provide some additional clarity. But as indicated, there's no, uh, financial commitments whatsoever in this resolution, 2018 dash 47. This is a resolution that will approve the establishment of an economic development area and allocation area, and approves the economic development plan for the economic development area. On November 13th, 2018 Lebanon, then redevelopment commission adopted Resolution Number 2018 dash 14, the declaratory resolution designating an area known as the Patterson Street Economic Development Area as an economic development area pursuant to Section 41 of the Act. The declaratory resolution also approved an economic development plan for the economic development area. The Lebanon Plan Commission on November 19th, 2018 approved and adopted an order determining that the declaratory resolution and the plan conformed to the plan of development of the city of Lebanon and approving the declaratory resolution in the plan. Section 16B of the Act requires this council, the city of Lebanon, to approve the order of the Plan Commission. Therefore, pursuant to the Act, this council hereby approves in all respects the declaratory resolution, the plan, and the order. The common council hereby approves the determination that the economic development area is in an economic development area pursuant to the Act. And then this resolution shall be in full force and effect after the passage by the council and approved by the mayor as required by law.
So, it, it is a fairly straightforward resolution. May I understand if you have concerns, John? I mean.
I've not read it.
What are, what are the implications if we don't pass it tonight? What if we wait till the next meeting?
Rob, can you speak to the timeline on that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a delay of the timing, the timeline. From the developer's standpoint, that's, that's what's driving this. They want to get started.
I mean, like, how big of a delay for them will it be?
Are they going to miss a financial deadline or anything like that?
What's up with this?
We just got a revised schedule today. I'm going to need to find it here. Um, that's the wrong one, I think. Right now, we're scheduled to close on bonds at the, you know, the last week in February. Uh, and they have begun some work on the demo already to date. Uh, they've been out there for several weeks, starting to do some interior demo on the building. So, theoretically, it would push us back sometime into March, I'm assuming, probably a month delay.
Why?
Give or take.
How would it push you back a whole month? Where's the two-week gap?
Um, it, it, it depends on the schedule of the redevelopment commission, which only meets once a month. So, if it pushes, if we push this back two weeks, then it pushes them back another month.
Okay. So, I, I'm willing to push it back, but I'm willing to call a special meeting on the third. If we want to come back and look at this, give us chance, look at the resolution.
The third of December?
Yes. Takes two council members to call a special meeting. We can do that, if we want to look at it.
What's there to look at? I mean, something we're going to do anyway.
Just to give you time to look at the resolution. That's all I'm trying to do.
I, I, whatever council wants to do. I mean, I mean, I said it was late. I mean, I know, I know.
I'm not, I'm not available next on the third.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah. I would take your vote first.
Okay. Just take, okay. Um.
Yeah, just, just so you know, we, we would go, we would delay a month, no matter, even if you did a special meeting. They'd have to send out a notice of the RDC's December 10th meeting tomorrow in order to get on the RDC's meeting on the 10th. So, we'd, we'd have to push their, the RDC's schedule back a month, no matter whether you had a special meeting or not.
I didn't know what they're.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the ability to do the notice for the RDC's meeting in time.
Okay. Um, any, for, any public comment on Resolution 2018 dash 47? Okay. This time, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018 dash 47?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution dash, or 2018 dash 47.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Staying.
One abstaining. Okay. Resolution 28.
Voting nay.
I have, I've not read the document.
I mean, yes or no.
Can I, can I ask for clarification? In our agenda minutes, we have 2847 NDOT, and this is so.
So, yeah, that happened, like I said, that was my best guess back on, in, back on Tuesday on what, what it was. And so, we realized that the NDOT didn't need to be a resolution until
Okay.
till after that point. So, that's why the 47 then moved to the Patterson Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
Yep.
So, I'm. John's vote as nay, I mean.
I, I think, uh, councilman.
I think he can just abstain, correct?
I think you, you can abstain. Did you, you abstained, councilman couple?
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Resolution 2018 dash 47 passes with one abstention. So, okay, that concludes what I have on our new business. Terry, ask if there's anything from council? Okay. Any announcements or discussion?
I would like to thank the, uh, street department the last couple of weeks, uh, with the leaves and everything that's been going on. They've been working tirelessly on getting that taken care of. And then tonight, they get the fun job of starting on the ice. So, I want to tip my hat to all the workers there. They've done a great job, and, uh, they don't get a lot of credit for it. And unfortunately, I would also like to offer congratulations to Western Boone High School for winning the football championship. Uh, we do have some of those folks live in the Lebanon area, so I, I think it was a great job on their part.
Good job. Absolutely. Well said. Uh, with that, we'll go on to claims and entertain a motion. Moved to approve. We have motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Claims are approved, and we entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
We have motion adjourned. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.